I should just run one of you.
What?
Megan's on there.
I don't know.
At six o'clock.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Cascade City Council meeting. We'll have a call to order with the pledge for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliphant.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hush.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Gail.
Second.
Second by Hush. All in favor?
Aye.
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 At this time, we'll have public comment. There's limited three minutes per person on agenda items, the local government issues. Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. City council minutes nine twenty-two twenty-five and special city council minutes nine twenty-nine twenty-five. Cascade Public Library minutes nine seven twenty-five. Cascade Personnel Committee minutes nine eight twenty-five. Cascade EMS minutes nine six twenty-five. Jones County Economic Development Board minutes eight twenty-six twenty-five. Visa invoice in the amount of one thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. August and September month-end financial reports. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five claims. Is there any questions about the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a quick one on page eleven. The visa. I just noticed there's a rewards for thirty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-six. Rewards. I don't know if that's. It's three hundred ninety-eight dollars. I know some cities have gotten in trouble with these rewards type things, whoever with use. I don't know. Is that correct? Page eleven on our. I just want to make sure that. Said some cities.
Are you asking if we used rewards?
Well, there's rewards there. Some cities have gotten in trouble with improper use of the rewards. I want to make sure that. Is that what that number is? Is it dollars? Cents?
Not nine thousand dollars. It's like pennies on the dollar probably.
Oh, yeah. That's thirty-nine eight-eight-six.
On my, on mine, I mean, that would be three hundred ninety-eight dollars. I don't know if that's true on this or. I just want to make sure we're not.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Getting into some. Just so there's an understanding in how those are to be used. If in fact, that's the dollar amount that's, that's worth.
Yeah, we can look into.
I mean, there's been problems. Stayed by over here. I know there was some place, somebody got in trouble by misusing those.
If there's no other questions, I need a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Hush. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, public, public hearing on the proposed transfer of city-owned real estate. I need a motion to open public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant.
I'll second it.
Second by Gail. Roll call.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Is there anything about this we need?
No, I mean, we've done this.
It's just a formality.
Yeah, we had to update the legal description. So, yeah, it's a formality what we're going through.
I need a motion then to go back into Riggler session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gail.
Second.
Second by Oliphant. Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Number eight, consideration to approve Resolution number ninety-nine dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the transfer and conveyance of city-owned property with the corrected legal description. This all been. We're good. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by, uh, Gail.
Second.
Second by Delaney. Roll call.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Number nine, consideration to approve Resolution number one hundred and one dash twenty-five, a resolution approving the purchase of a Ferno INX cot for the Cascade EMS service. Is there any questions?
Yeah, what is this?
So, on one of the. No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
On one of the, on one of the ambulances, they have a cot that's malfunctioning and they need to replace it. And that's the cost of the cot and then they have to then pair it with the ambulance itself. So, they have to do like a procedure down Cedar Rapids to basically go in and pair that cot so they can work with that ambulance. So, that cost would be total with the, with the ambulance.
Well, no, that's just, that's.
The cot and rerouting or the syncing with the, the new, the ambulance.
Correct. That's, yeah, just the cot basically itself and making sure it works in, in that would be in rig three fifty-two.
That's another one?
That's the older one.
And then we'll replace that with a newer one and then this cot will go in the newer one?
So, yeah. When we ever, we would get a new rig. We can take the brand-new cot system and transfer it over to the new rig. It's about a one-to-two-day process because it'll have to take it down to Cedar Rapids. Like, say if we ordered it tomorrow, the cot, then it would, it would take two to three weeks to get the cot in. One to two days down in Cedar Rapids for them to get it in and working and then it'd be the same thing whenever we got the new cot. It'd be one to two days down in Cedar Rapids to get the, the new cot into the new rig. Whenever that would happen.
And then I included in all the information here for you, the estimate to have fixed the other cot. But you were able to, if we would have some refurbished parts, it drops it down almost close to half.
Because just on parts alone, if we can get them refurbished, so currently, the original quote is just parts, not labor, is sixty-one hundred dollars. If we get them refurbished, and I did not get a hard quote today like I was hoping, it'd be twenty-seven hundred dollars. So, it would be a difference of three thousand four hundred and eight dollars in savings and that's just parts only because that would be a control box and a display panel. And that's on rig three fifty-one.
What's refurbished? I mean, you, would you like that or would you rather go, I mean, would it be, what's, is there no warranty probably on that?
It's a ninety-day warranty. It, the refurbished parts are refurbished at Ferno. So, that's, I mean, you always take that gamble. Do you go with it or don't you go with, try refurbish, you know, to save the money? It's always a tough call. I mean, sometimes the refurbished part may work just as well, but then it may not.
And if we get a new ambulance and you're stuck with one that won't work with the rig?
Nope. So, that's three fifty-one. So, right now, we're talking about three fifty-one's cot. The new ambulance would replace three fifty-two.
Oh, so that would get through. New ambulance would replace three fifty-two.
I know. It's confusing with the two rigs, two cots.
So, this is three fifty-one's cot?
Correct, that we're looking at fixing.
So, we just want to fix the cot for three fifty-one? Okay. But we're going to replace three fifty-two with a new one.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
That's where I got confused. I was thinking like, wait a minute.
I mean, it's just.
That's not what I remember us talking about.
Well, it's just ironic that both cots started acting up at the same time around the same time, so. Bad luck.
Have we ever any problems with them before? I mean, were they refurbished or anything like that or no or?
No, we've, I mean, like, we had a flat tire, a flattened tire because they're solid tires, but like, one got flattened. So, it's like we played replaced tires. Otherwise, the only other issues was like a cable come loose and so, I mean, that's easy fix on our part. We just, they could talk us through that stuff.
Is there better ones on the market?
I mean, there's other ones.
But you, you're familiar with this?
We're familiar with these. We've had these for, you know, nine and eleven years. We really like them.
That's good.
Every cot, you know, a company is going to claim they're the best, but whatever. I guess you get used to.
Any other questions?
Is then for refurbished or new?
That's what I'm relying on you guys more.
I'd rather go new.
I frankly would too. I, I agree with Chad. I'd rather you guys have better equipment. I mean, you're so important to this community. This is where we should be spending money, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the labor part, it's okay. But you guys obviously have to vote on that. But then the labor part, so. Just labor alone to get the tech back here is, I think it was like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars. You know, that would be like miles, time and labor.
And, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's three different miles, time and transit. Oh, and then it's time here. However, if we send it back to Ferno, then that's like another savings, which this doesn't make sense, but it's cheaper to send it back to Ferno. Because that would be around eight hundred dollars to send it there to have it repaired. The bummer is, we'd be without it for about two weeks. But the plus side on that though is they do have a loner. So, I keep having twists and turns. I just found out today they have a loner.
So, they do have a loner?
Yeah.
Okay.
For that rig. Because the cots in both rigs are diff, the cots themselves are the same. It's the track systems on how they go in are different. So, right now, the cots are not interchangeable. When we go with the new cot, then they would be interchangeable. We could put either cot in either rig.
Oh, that's nice.
That would be really nice.
Yeah, I'm down for the new cot. That seems to make sense.
But then my next question, so if you're down for that, obviously, you still need to vote on that. But then what do you, how would you like to approach the repairing of three fifty-one's cot? Have it fixed here or have it shipped to Ferno?
So, say again, the, to have somebody come here, it's going to be, did you say twelve or fifteen hundred?
Twelve or thirteen, I think.
Twelve or thirteen hundred. And it's going to be eight hundred to have it sent back? Just to ship it back?
Well, the shipping and the labor is eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
Or fourteen hundred. So, it's, it, it's weird, but it's a savings. Financially, it's a savings.
To ship it that way?
Back to Ferno.
Does it cost us anything to have the loner here?
He never mentioned that and he's, the guy I've been working with has been very pleasant.
Okay.
So, when you say ship it, does that mean they send somebody out here to come get it or you have to drive it there?
I'm assuming though, they would send like a crate or we're not, and they did not respond to my email today. That's what I'm wondering is if we have to make a crate or if they send a crate, but it would be like a shipping company. And I'm just going to use like DHL for an example, but it definitely would not be like FedEx or UPS because they, I mean, it's big.
I just wasn't sure if it would be like a, they just actually ship somebody out here to get it or you guys have to like call it.
It sounds like it would be a shipping company. That was when I talked to the sales rep. However, you know, I don't know. I didn't talk to the actual technician on that part.
And if we have, if they send a technician here, it's fourteen hundred, how quickly and how long will it take for the repairs? Do we know that?
I want to pull my hair out when I deal with the technician. I'm going to guess a minimum of two weeks before he gets back here.
Okay. So, we're looking at two weeks regardless?
So, technically, we could use the cot if we need to, if we're in an emergency situation where we have to take two rigs out. We just need to be very careful and make sure we have extra people on hand to make sure we're getting up and down appropriately and in and out of the ambulance appropriately.
And in the meantime. If it's going to be two weeks to get a technician, we do not have a loner cot during that time?
No, not right now.
Okay.
But like I said, if we have to take three fifty-one's cot out, we could, we just prefer not to at this point.
Prefer.
But I know when we first were talking about this with three fifty-one, there was no loner. But now, there is a loner.
No, that was the loner, the no loner was for three fifty-two because it has the old rail system.
Oh, and we're not, we're not doing anything with that. We're hopefully.
We're replacing that whole.
We're getting a new one.
Getting a new one.
All right.
Well, that's what we're proposing.
So, to, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
The trade-in. Is it worth, is there enough parts on that old one to keep instead of trading it in for that little amount?
The one that would be trading in, it's a generation one. So, it's the first model.
Nothing's going to match.
So, exactly. That's the problem. I mean, like, so the wheels would work. There's a few things that would work back and forth.
But not, not enough to.
I mean, it was recommended, like, we could list it on, is it gov dot?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Org or something and we could potential, or even eBay that we could potentially get more for it. Because it does still work. So, but that's up to you guys if you wanted to do that. Or just go with the two, twenty-five hundred and just be done with it and you have it out of our hair.
So, if we did the trade-in, we'd be looking at, and with what has, with the balance that's there, the forty-two thousand. We're looking at it costing us about twelve grand?
Oh, because that forty-two thousand, that's coming from the Jones County EMS dollars.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. To me, it makes the most sense for cot three fifty-one, the cot four rig three fifty-one, am I saying that right? To go with the new.
Okay, that's three fifty-two.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Not the refurbished stuff.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, that is three fifty-one.
Yes.
To go with the new parts.
New parts and to ship it back because we're going to get the loner for the two weeks. That's, that would be my proposal for this. And then, I don't know if we want to even discuss three fifty-two yet, but three fifty-two, I would say just brand-new cot.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
So, Steve, do you want, or Deanna, do we do a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Is that for Resolution one oh one twenty-five dash twenty-five? Or is that, nope, sorry.
Yeah, dash twenty-five.
Yeah, one oh one twenty-five.
One oh one twenty-five.
That's, that's for the, yes.
That's for cot three fifty-one, rig three fifty-one?
Three fifty-two.
Three fifty-two, buying the new one.
Yeah, it is. It's confusing.
Unfortunately, this has all happened at the same time.
Okay, so for Resolution one oh one dash twenty-five, I make a motion to purchase a new cot.
Motion by Oliphant?
Second.
Second by Weber. Roll call.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Thank you. Number ten, consideration to approve Resolution number one oh two dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new ambulance for the Cascade EMS service.
So, we started talking about this at their EMS meeting and I know you guys have, this is probably the first time you're going to be hearing about this, but I did prepare a resolution just in case you're ready to make this move. And then this morning, you had asked me about the rebuilding of the box and I asked Kim about that and Chris did ask a company about that. And so, the total price of the chassis with rebuilding the box, the cost was still going to be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, it's.
So, it's kind of a wash.
Yeah.
What was that, Mom?
Two hundred and ninety thousand.
But a brand-new one's three hundred?
Yeah.
Well, the Demir's is a three, is approximately three hundred and that, we still have to do, get into the specs on that one. So, it will likely be more than the three hundred thousand. The Lifeline is three hundred and thirty thousand, in which we currently have a Lifeline and so, we just had it built off of the current specs that we already have.
Okay. And so, this three thirty-six is two spec of what we currently have?
Yes, provided we don't want to change it in any way.
And it's two to two and a half years out?
Yeah.
The consultants we hired a year or so ago, I believe they're from Sioux City area.
I think so.
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, their recommendation was to reuse the box. That that's the way they did it. Is there, something's changed or?
Price of everything has gone dramatically. That was like back in twenty.
They sounded like that was routine out there. They would continue using a good box and then just change the chassis.
Because we have talked, we have talked to some com, or some services that have done the rebuilds. And initially, they worked great, but then it wasn't long and they started having like wiring issues like in the patient cabin area. It's just, it can happen. It'll, I mean, obviously, it can happen anytime, but it can happen quicker when you're doing the rebuild because it wasn't having gone through the factory built that way.
And for the difference of forty thousand dollars, to me, that doesn't make sense when you can get so many more years out of it.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, that you start brand-new.
What years are our rigs now?
Two thousand sixteen, yeah. And the one that we're looking to replace, I mean, there is some rust spots, you know, the paint's bubbling up on the back end of it around the wheels a little bit.
And I, I said in the meeting and I still say, and I'll always stand by it, once you hit that twenty-year mark on any vehicle, I mean, you start getting into that direction after that. Everything from contacts, wires, you name it, starts to degrade. There's a lot of maintenance that starts to show up. It may not show up right away, but it does show up. I, I, I think even with just a rebuild in the box, there may be other issues. I think for the price difference, I think the newer way, new one is the way to go. I mean, if it was, if it was drastic, like one hundred fifty versus three hundred or something or two hundred, you know, maybe that would be something, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we're pretty close to, pretty close here on costs.
What, what's the resale run on used units?
Not good.
Not good?
No. I talked to a couple of services in Dubuque County and some of them would just trade them in on the deal and others would trade them, or you know, list them like, say, on Marketplace or somewhere online and then sell them that way. But it wasn't even a fair, like, because the one guy, he was like, yeah, his rig was like eighteen years old. So, like, of course, he only got like, I don't know, I think it was six or seven thousand dollars for it, but it's pretty.
Do you want a diesel or a gas?
That's a big question that we do have right now.
Yeah. What's everybody's opinion and your guys' group?
We're kind of wishy-washy both ways.
I mean, there's only fifty-six thousand miles on the one. I mean, gas is a lot cheaper than diesel. I mean, diesel, you give a lot more torque, but they're sixty-three thousand. How much cheaper is a gas?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars.
Did go with a gas model.
I mean.
These are, these are four-wheel drive. Is that correct?
The prices that we got here, yes, are four-wheel drive ones.
And our last time, it was, it was debated whether two-wheel drive and four-wheel drive.
Yeah, because three fifty-one is a four-wheel drive, three fifty-two is a two-wheel drive.
What's everybody wanting to do?
I'm sorry, did you say three fifty-two is which one?
Two-wheel.
Two-wheel drive?
Two-wheel, yeah.
That's the root.
That's the one we would need to replace first, correct?
Correct. That's what we're looking at replacing. And that's the one that we're also going to put the new cot in initially until we get it replaced.
So, when we go to purchase a new one, we wouldn't have to pay for it until it's delivered or would we have to prepay?
Right, when we pay for it, when we deliver.
Okay.
Because I had asked, I contacted the sales rep of Lifeline because I know sometimes if you pay like all up front, you get a good discount. Well, we were not going to get very much. He said ten thousand dollars. You know, if we keep the money in the bank for two, two and a half years, we're going to make more in interest than that. So, it doesn't make sense to do that.
Do we have the money in the bank to pay for this?
We got two hundred and.
Yeah, we have two hundred and twenty-one thousand right now. And then we'll have reserves that go in every year and we're going to, my recommendation is to increase that. And then we also can tap into the Jones County money because we get like twenty to twenty-one thousand dollars every year.
And that's always, the Jones County money is always based off of number of calls we do run in Jones County. So, the more we run over there, the more.
Do we get anything from Dubuque County?
They don't have it. They don't have the levy. They probably won't. I, I wish.
Someday maybe.
Yes.
So, I mean, the two years gives us a little bit more money. Let's take a little more in there. Be a little closer to the, you know, to equal out the budget there. And then as far as a cot, a good percentage of the money we already had from Jones County can go to that. Wish that cuts that down. We're down to ten or so. So, it's really not. And thankfully, we've been saving money for, you know, so, I mean, that, that's the good news. I mean, we can't help what prices do, but. I'm, I'm for moving forward with the new one and just getting it on the, on the books to get it ordered with the two-year range and what the price difference is.
Gas or diesel?
I personally think gas, but I think, I think the ten thousand dollar savings and if they don't have a process, it's just a matter of everybody getting used to putting gas in instead of diesel.
Right. And yeah, we're working on that, that, you know, we're going to try and.
Unless you think, you know, having one being diesel and one being gas is going to, you know, really throw people off in that direction then.
Are they both currently diesel?
Because you get habits. You get habits. I mean, you pump up to a pump, you know, you do. It's just.
And Chris is working on that too, and I'm not exactly sure what he's all done. Because I know he's been talking to McDermott Oil and to see like, and if we switch to using credit cards only, then they would only work on certain pumps. So, we went to try and put the credit card.
It wouldn't work.
In the diesel pump, but we had the gas rig, it would not work.
Isn't it? Oh, my gosh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, sorry, that's going to be more.
Yeah, I was just like, wow, that's going to be a bit of a headache.
It'll be just from two different credit cards. It's still still.
It'll still be one statement, yeah. I was just thinking, that's wild technology can do that.
Just, okay, so what, what do we got for a variance in diesel and gas right now price-wise? Do you think it is? What's the current diesel rate?
Probably fifty cents. Diesel's been higher than gas for a long, long time.
Yeah, fifty cents. I'm just, I'm just thinking if it's worth it. I know we get a discount on the price, but like, for the cost of gas, if we're actually going to save us anything. If it's going to cause a headache for them trying to put stuff in, then maybe it's not worth it.
Have you had any maintenance trouble with the diesels?
That was brilliant.
How old is the diesel?
Three forty-nine.
Three forty-nine.
Two eighty-timers to three forty-five.
Sixty cents. Yeah, at the BP in town right now, it's three forty-five diesel, two eighty-five regular.
But they've been troubled for you in the past?
I mean, the rigs have been running great for us.
I'm, I'm good either. What do you guys want to do?
I think if it's going to be a two to two and a half year wait, I think we should order it now. Get it, get it going.
I mean, like the gas diesel thing.
Oh, I don't care. I know nothing about that stuff.
What do you think, Mark? All it takes is one person to put diesel and gasoline engine in.
I wouldn't, I would like to look into it a little bit before we just go ahead and decide right now.
We don't have to decide tonight. We can wait.
Yeah, we could, we could bring it back.
You know, going forward with it, one thing, but we should look at a few things first.
Is that, is that what everybody wants to do?
On the table, look at it? I like a motion.
I mean, even the next meeting, we can make a decision, but I would like to look at it a little.
Yeah, can we just move it to next?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just prepared it just in case everybody was.
No, thanks for doing that.
Got a motion by Delaney?
I'll do that.
Is it a motion to move?
No.
To table.
To table it. Move it to the next meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant. Roll call.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Yeah, I don't think there's a rush on it.
Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Discussion concerning bonding for the Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest project. Discussion concerning bonding for the Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest project.
Okay, so I kind of went through some things in my memo about options and provided you with those two options. I think to start with, it would be best to just bond for the ten years, but then hopefully after like seven years, when it's callable, we could pay the bond off. It'd be nice to get into a habit, routine, whatever of like doing a bond and doing a major street project at least every seven years. Cause we have enough streets in town that we, you know, can't do one every ten years or fifteen years or we're never gonna get done. But if we could get in on a seven-year rotation of doing this, I think that'd be a good idea.
What's everybody's thoughts?
So I know we talked, you, you said we had a, a grant out posture last year, we didn't get it. Is there any chance that for that street, we get it this year or you doubt it?
I don't know. There, like I said, there's so many people applying for grant money. And a lot of the, the ones that were awarded this last year were like water and sewer improvement projects, so. Even though streets are important and we are replacing infrastructure, it's a little different, so.
Do those ever go through like a cycle of what they're really approving? Like, right now they're focusing on water sewer, within a couple of years they focus on roads, do you think? Have you seen that kind of trend, Deanna?
I don't think so. I think a lot of, Jake, you probably see a lot of this. I think more of it's on water sewer improvements. Improving drinking quality, you know, the, the drinking water.
Sure.
And there's so much stuff with the, like the wastewater, you know, and I'm sure there's gonna be more stuff coming down with that.
I, I, are we talking about a funding source in particular?
Um, we had applied for Hinson's um, community grant, so.
Okay. I'm not specifically aware of that one. A lot of this stuff is regulatory driven on the water and wastewater side, so a lot of times there's funding for that stuff. Um, cause it's new regulations or stricter limits on stuff, and so they, a lot of times there's government funding offered for it, cause they know it's gonna be a burden, but. This one's not, not on the DOT route, so the, the funding we used for Johnson Street's not applicable. Part of it's in the county, so you could go to Dubuque County.
We did, we applied and got twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could, if you wanted to go SRF on the water and sewer, we could, but that's gonna up the engineering cost. And for just distribution stuff, I don't know that it's really worth it, cause you gotta go through facility planning effort and stuff with SRF program regardless of what the project is. So I'm not sure it's really worth it for just a low-interest loan. I'm, I don't know what the, what's the, what's your bonding rate looking like? If you, did you get a quote when you were talking to bonding for this?
Well, we're bonding for one point four.
Okay, well, SRF is not gonna beat that, so. So SRS really a move, move point, and that would only be for the water and sewer. And that would, it's not gonna beat that bond rate, it's gonna cost more engineering, cause you gotta go through facility planning and review of the state, so.
And like I stated in my memo also, that the twenty-seventeen street bond, this is, this year will be paid off. So we're, we would only be adding forty thousand to our debt and um, in twenty-seven, we will be paying off the street sweeper, which is forty thousand dollars really using for local options, so when we start having to make payments, we're basically not going to add anything, we're just gonna.
Continue.
Yeah, it's kind of just continuing that amount of money.
Well, it needs to be done. Yeah, I think we need to rotate every seventy, get something done every seven years too, or we're really gonna get behind.
You, we get behind faster than you can catch up.
We're, we're way behind now, so.
So this, this, this one is, is water and sewer also, right?
Right, it's everything.
Okay.
And, and there's a small storm component, replacing the storm that's out there.
So that's one thing we wanted to note was, it's not dealing with any system capacities in there. I mean, for that, you'd have to start down at the levy and upsize stuff all the way through, so we're just, we're picking up what's currently out there and getting it to what's existing for, for the storm sewer conveyance. So I just wanted to make sure that, as council understood, there's not gonna be drastic, you know, there might be some pawning in some of those gutters where it's flat and some of those corners where it doesn't drain real great, so it should be better in that regard, but it's not gonna solve any drainage issues or. It's still taking it to the same place, same size pipes.
There's no sense of enlarging the pipes for future going down.
I was thinking that too.
You know what I'm saying, Jake?
Well, if you would, it'd be that, so it's, I think there's twin pipes, I don't remember if they're twin thirty-sixes that go down the hill down to the park.
Yeah.
But there's drainage issues in that park where it don't.
It's too flat.
Even if we upsized it, that park's so flat, I'm not sure it's gonna drain away anyway. It'd just flood the park more probably.
So that's the only spot we have? Storm sewer up there?
No, there is some coming, I don't have survey on it, but I think, I think there is some coming, I think there is some storm coming down fifth.
And that all of that come down into the park?
Yeah, that's.
And, and it goes there, goes across the street, adds over. On Hayes or.
I think there's some that comes down. Picks up a lot on Garfield.
Right. Most of the rest of it heads towards the park. That's all we got.
Yeah.
Go there.
So the proposed is more, it's just a, it's a basically replacement of what's there. Approximately thirty-one foot wide roadway back to back, five foot wide sidewalk on the west side of Hayes and the north side of Third Ave. Will improve ADA compliance and accessibility throughout the corridor, upsize that water main, there's, it's a problematic four-inch water main. I know in front of Rife's, that, that hydrant there when they flush, um, there's a resident that lives along there that talks with Phil and I think they have to flush that thing like every month.
Yeah.
And they don't, they don't hardly get any flow out of it, so that main, that main must be pretty well scaled shut. Um, cause they're not getting sufficient flows out of it to get the, the main properly flushed. Replace existing sanitary in kind, um, no real upsizing or anything there. Replace the storm sewer pretty much in kind, so.
Are you doing a concrete asphalt alternate on it?
I assumed we did that way. Yeah, we'll follow the, the city's ordinance um, on the, the asphalt alternate and the, and the Portland alternate.
You noted that the right away is forty, forty feet?
Yep.
And that you could only have parking on one side to have two-way traffic, is that the, is that the idea or?
No, I think there's parking on both sides, but we said unless the, the existing right of way doesn't accommodate sidewalk on both sides, that's why we just assumed it'd go back the way it is now with sidewalk on the north side of Third Ave and the west side of Hayes, cause there's not sidewalk on both sides. If we tried to put it in, we'd either have to reduce roadway width or we'd have to look at taking right of way, which I'm not sure how well that would work, cause a lot of that's pretty tight through there.
So you're concerned just with whether it's sidewalk on one side or both sides?
Yeah. I mean, what, what we have planned now is just sidewalk on the north and west side where currently it exists.
Uh, Jake, when we did, we're having the problems with the uh, Garfield drainage problem that was going through there. They all came down there. I think you had maps where all those pipes were coming down.
Hmm?
So anyway, you could get us those.
Yep.
So we could take a look.
Yep. Yeah, cause we mapped that.
I, I just, I, I just know that we were small on all the pipes up in that, that area there.
This section is better, if I remember right. I did, if I remember right, this section that drains out to the park is not as overloaded as what drains down here through the alley.
That's, that's bad.
Well. This stuff is significantly undersized, but I can, yeah, I can send it over.
Yeah, cause I, I just thinking in thought processes, you know, if we get into some more of these streets up on this side here and we start, need to probably start talking about, you know, ways that we can alleviate that for future reference down the road.
But like this one, you'd have to start down here and you'd have to upsize the whole way. It'd be a significant investment.
Cause I think, cause I think most of that up there, if I'm not mistaken, just is all downhill drainage and it doesn't actually hit the pipes until closer to Garfield, right? It's all ran on the street.
Till like Fifth and Garfield, I don't think there's any storm. I'd have to double check, but.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a whole lot of storm till like Fifth and Garfield.
So I, I'm just thinking, you know, if we were to get to a point where, you know, we did one of these streets where we could run some of the water to the park. Know what I mean? Do you think there's an opportunity? I, I'd like to see where those are, if there was an opportunity where it could get picked up if we ended up redoing one of those streets, that we could connect into that. So then if we're doing this one, if we put some bigger pipes in, then it would be, you know, ready if that were to occur, if we wanted to.
Yeah, I could send that stuff.
And how much would it be to upsize those pipes to a bigger?
Not much, because we're not gonna change. We got those twin pipes running down the hill of the park. I'm sure, I don't think we need to upsize those.
Right.
So it'd just be upsizing at like. It would be upsizing probably just at Fourth and Hayes. Across the street would probably be all.
Okay.
And then if we did like Fourth or Fifth over to Garfield.
Right.
I would want, but I would want to review that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't cost much if we upsized stuff.
Yeah, at least, let's, let's at least look at it, because you know, if we do try to put in a fix. Cause the only reason I bring it up is because as everybody watches the news and sees, our rainfalls aren't normal anymore. We're not getting them, and it seems to be when we do get hit, or we're not right now, it seems to be a lot. And so if we have a chance to upsize pipes where we can handle bigger volumes, I maybe have to, you know, we might find ourselves, you know, five years down the road having to fix something up there around a pipe or something, if you're gonna do a street, so I'd rather be ready to have another opportunity than, so, yeah, if we could just check that out.
Yep.
And can you um, design the storm intakes that they have more pitch on the throat? Cause on Garfield, the water runs so fast, it goes right past them.
Yeah, um.
You know, can you, are the specs such that they have to be that flat, or can you pitch them more?
They're currently open throat, and I would wanna talk to Phil to see if he wants to stay with those open throats. Or if he wants to switch over to the graded intake. I don't, I don't know which, which way Phil's gonna, gonna go on that. We can certainly try, I can look, we have modified SUDAS details in the past.
Yeah.
On those intakes, and we can see if we can increase the, the pitch on them to make sure.
Cause if you could put more pitch on the flow line, you know, on the curb.
Well, the graded intakes, I know they take more water than the, than the open throat ones, if they're clean.
That's the thing.
If they're not, if they're not clean, which, you know, a lot of times it rains when there's a lot of debris and leaves and stuff in it.
Even with the open throat, that's an issue.
Yeah.
With all the leaves in the fall, I mean.
Yep.
Again.
Just take a look at that.
Or helpful.
The water can't get in them.
Well, if the water don't get in them, it's like a big.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
But this road, this road's a lot different than Garfield. This one's.
Everything's coming to it, so there's not gonna be any bypass.
Right.
Like there was on Garfield.
Yeah.
Cause it was, I think the main issue that we were looking at with Garfield was it was bypassing when it got to first, right?
Yeah, it was, all the dips were taken out of Garfield, that was a problem.
Yeah. At, at each intersection, the, the, the street was higher, so it directed the water into the intake.
Once the crown was gone.
No, we're dealing with. We're dealing with the corner here, this is a whole different ballgame, but.
So are we on twelve already?
We are still on eleven.
Okay.
I, I would like some um, your thoughts on what you want to do, so then I can direct um, our financial advisors on what to prepare for paperwork and stuff at the next meeting.
I, I propose the bonding. That's the one we're on, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd make a. Yeah, I'd wanna do with the bonding project. Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, that would be nice.
I'll make a motion to that.
Motion by Delaney?
Second.
Second by Weber? Is that a voice vote or?
I'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Oliphant? Aye. Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Number twelve, consideration approved resolution number one hundred dash twenty-five, resolution approving entering into a professional services agreement with MSA for the Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest reconstruction project.
So the, the project in front of you is to design this winter and have a bid opening in March and then construction next season?
Is there any benefit in having an earlier bid opening?
I don't know how much earlier we could do it.
That, that'd be too tight?
Yeah, by the time we get through reviews and if we have a public, I don't know if we wanna have an open house informational meeting like we did on Garfield.
Yeah, I mean, that's helpful.
It's not required, but we could have like a couple hours of an open house. By the time we do that, I mean, it potentially could be beneficial, but I think this is, this is a pretty aggressive schedule as it is, to have a bid opening and be through the, have a bid opening in March, which means we're advertising in February. That doesn't give us much time to get through design and review with Phil and the guys and come back to council and. I don't know what the bidding environment's gonna be like in March, but usually that time of year, you're still got guys looking.
Better.
Yeah.
And we've had really good weather, so I would imagine the guys won't have a ton of carryover, but.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney?
I'll second it.
Second by Gail, roll call?
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Thanks, Jake.
Delaney?
Yep, thanks everyone.
Thanks, Jake.
I will follow up with the storm sewer stuff.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Reports, Fred?
Thanks, Jake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, you guys got my monthly report. I just kinda wanted to remind everybody that October fifth, October twenty-fifth coming up, we've got trick or treating that Saturday night, uh, the Halloween parade and then the fireman's dance, so hopefully everybody uh, as they're driving around town, kinda is watching out for the little ghosts and goblets, we just kinda wanna make sure, and at the time they're doing it, it's gonna be a little bit lighter anyway, so. The Halloween parade will start a little bit darker, but uh, we are working on um, also getting the interviews set up for the replacement for Brad. Hopefully we'll have those interviews next Monday and um, by the next meeting, we'll have a candidate for you.
Great.
Good.
Or a recommendation, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred, do you have any update with the school and the crosswalk?
Yeah, actually, I'm kinda glad you said that. I was gonna say something. Over the last couple of weeks, we've moved it down to where Harrison Street Southeast meets it. Gives us an extra block. Part of what we ran into up at Tyler Street, and I kinda noticed this as I was sitting in the parking lot where the teachers parked their cars. A lot of people were coming from the downtown area, coming up to Poke Street and then around, and before they hit the alley, everybody was grabbing their visors as they were blocking the sun. Um, so I drove it a few mornings and decided that, yeah, you couldn't see anything until you actually got through the crosswalk. And I don't know how long that lasts during the year, but moving it down further there, it's in a low spot and it's much better shaded. I spoke to the crossing guards and kinda gave them a little, little bit of some helpful hints. We talked about the timing of cars from one intersection. We talked about the timing of cars from one intersection of Tyler Street, how long it takes to get down to the Harrison Street intersection, and kinda made a recommendation, if you see a car and it's already through that intersection, just wait. Hold the kids back. Don't go out there. Talking to both crossing guards, they really like it. They're much better.
I understand, yeah.
And we are, have been doing some, talking about maybe doing some speed changes during school and looking at a couple other things. And I did go over, we've got the one at Garfield Street also, and I did go over there one morning and sit, and, um, I'm not gonna say that's not as heavily traveled in the morning, but I did see one kid come up, was probably high school age, and, um, he was on his phone. I know a couple cars stopped for him. He was on his phone. He didn't realize that they even stopped and finally got off his phone and the cars had left already, so. Um, I don't think that's, that's as much in the morning to worry about as what it would be on the other side, but we'll keep an eye on that one also. But, uh, yeah, it does seem to be working better over there.
Are we able to move the signage down to Harrison?
Yeah, so I'm actually working with Jake on that, because a speed limit sign has to be so far away from a crosswalk. Um, so we know that twenty-five's gotta be moved. Um, but we've also looked at or started discussing maybe dropping the speed limit in the school zone area to like fifteen or twenty. So I'm.
Just, just when, when kids are present, not the entire day. It'd be just like from Polk Street to Jackson Street.
The issue with that is, you have to enforce it. It's not.
So if you move the speed limit sign up closer to Casey's, would that be a correct distance then?
Yeah, I think it's gotta be two hundred feet away.
Yeah, I think the minimum is two hundred feet.
Two hundred.
It'd have to be, I think, on Jackson Street or just a little bit further.
And the signage that, like, the crosswalk signage that has the flashing lights and everything, can we move those, too?
We can move those, yes.
Okay.
And I know the one crossing guard says she does kinda miss those. I've actually seen her in the morning. There's three kids that cross there in the mornings, and usually they come up from the pool area. Their parents will wait and then they cross. The parents will go up to the other intersection, drop the kid off at school, and they won't come back to where the crossing guard is. They'll push the button and cross there. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
We're also talking about changing habits when it comes to all that, too.
Yep.
That'd be a.
But I mean, I even think, having moved it to Harrison makes so much more sense, because to Fred's point, like, I do throw my visor down right there. When I'm coming back from dropping my kids off at Aquwin, you know, you come up that hill. It's, you don't, it's right there, and with all the traffic anyway from.
It's busy.
And after school, you know, you have all the parents right there picking up. It, it just, to me, it makes so much more sense. It's so much safer to move it to Harrison, so I'm so glad we did that.
Deanna?
Um, just some updates. River City started milling streets last week, um, and then they're supposed to be asphalting. We haven't got a definite time. Um, we're continuing to work on our software version. That's still on track, and Sammy and I have been doing some trainings and, which is making us want to get it done even faster. The pool was painted, and we also had them repaint one of the water features while they were here. We'll be working on our annual reports that are due December first, so you'll be seeing some of those come up at the next meetings. We're looking at flushing the hydrants before winter comes, like we do every year, and right now, we're tentatively looking at November tenth, starting that. Um, I'm continuing to work with Big River on the donor sign and then the veterans, veteran banners. A family is donating a picnic table to the River View Park as a memory, and it will match the other tables that are in the pavilion. And then I had issued a nuisance abatement on one-eleven Polk Street, and the property owner made no attempt to take care of it, so I had it taken care of. And the invoice was sent to the property owner, and then he has until the end of the month to pay, or it'll get assessed to his taxes.
Do they have any other nuisances out there like that one?
Um, there is one that's been a nuisance forever on Buchanan Street. Um, that will be taken care of as well.
What about like extra vehicles? Don't we have something about extra vehicles in yards and stuff like that, too?
I'm sorry?
Extra vehicles in yards?
Yes, there was a no, I, pictures to another property, um, on Tyler Street, too, so.
Who, who goes around and looks at that stuff, or who points that stuff out?
Well, sometimes I just notice, or I get the police notice, or other people call and bring it to my attention, and then I go look.
If it's making somebody mad.
I don't think we need to let it get that far.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
Are most of the dead trees taken care of?
Yes, they, they all are. Yeah, all of those have been taken care of.
And Deanna, this weekend is citywide cleanup?
Yes.
Is that right?
Saturday.
Okay. And we, can you just remind us what we can put out? Because I have some stuff. I'll get rid of two sets.
I mean, you can put out almost anything, but like if you have any kind of appliances, you need to come get a tag.
Okay.
And you can do up to two large items.
And can you clarify what a large item is?
A couch, a mattress. Someone's putting on a piano, um.
A treadmill.
A treadmill, and treadmill's not considered an appliance either.
Okay.
It's kinda, it's weird. If you have questions, call. Just call.
And like, we can start putting those out, like, on Thursday, would you recommend?
Or already, because a lot of times, if you put them out like early in the week, people will go by and take your stuff.
Put five bicycles out and.
They're gone.
One's gone already, and somebody was picking hearts off of other ones today, so.
Great, awesome. Steve, will we see you driving around picking up hearts?
Nope, passed on. Thanks for asking.
Very tired from that.
Are we, are we moving it along with the stormwater utility?
Yes, um, but I really haven't had a lot of time to look into that. I wanna look into, um, how we're gonna do it, because you guys didn't really want us to do a flat fee, so that means I have to look at a lot of stuff to come up with a, a fee.
Nice to be able to get that by first January, maybe.
Yep.
Be nice. Also, the old library, are we moving one way or the other on that, or?
I mean, I can put it on another, I can put it on an agenda and we can discuss it again.
Okay, I'd like to see that done, which is well, because it's just sitting there for six months.
If there's nothing else for the betterment of the community, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant?
Second.
Second by Hush, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.